Everybody's time to call this meeting to order. The Community Development Corporation Meeting for the Town of Laguna Vista on March 7, 2022. Please stand for questions. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Romero.
President.
Terry Galley, here. Kathy Rice-Brianne, here. Lee West, here. Jamie Petty, here. Sid Ramos.
And he did provide an informal statement that he would be missing. Okay. Move on to open forum. At this time, I'd allow three minutes for persons to address the board on any topic. There's no session of formal actions taken during the agent item. Speaker request for him must be present to the city executive prior to the meeting. Have you received any requests for?
No, sir, no.
We'll move on to new business. The first item being the discussion of the minutes from January 10th meeting.
That you do not have. I will have to supplement those. They just could not. I ran completely out of time to get this done. So I apologize sincerely. And I, that's all.
Thank you. That will then move on to the financial reports.
So the finances are, the only two checks or bills that you guys had to pay since the last time we met was, we went ahead and paid out the administration fees of $7,500 and the office supplies of $500 to the town of Laguna Vista. So we paid that out and then we paid Mr. O'Neal's recent legal bill of $740. So you guys had outfalling of $8,740. And as you can see, the balance sheet, your cash in bank is around $211,000 and your liabilities and fund balance have come down to the $213,639.
Any questions or comments related to the financial report? Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item in the business, which is the special of UTRGV clinic agreement, consideration possible action, renewal of the agreement.
So we're coming to you tonight with the UTRGV clinic. The UTRGV staff approached us about the renewal of their contract that is coming up in about a year's time. It will expire in June of next year. So we're just wanting to brainstorm and get kind of the feel of where we're at as the CDC and continuing on that agreement. And if anything needs to be, they're here representing UTRGV for any questions we have for them directly. Some of the research and fact finding that I've gotten is that the clinic is wanted and needed, but there's just obviously room for improvement as far as community connection. And I've talked to Michael and Matt with UTRGV and discussed a lot of those concerns and how we can work together to be more integrated. You know, we are helping as a city. We can know what's going on. I expressed concern that we had a whole COVID outbreak and our citizens felt like we didn't even have a local clinic and, and yet we did. And, you know, there was just, there was some real big breakdown and I don't know where it was or it doesn't really matter where it was, but we don't want to have it going forward. And so that was one of the big takeaways I've taken from the community comments that I've gotten is just how we as the city can be more helpful in making sure what they're doing is available and known to the public. And so I will let you guys sort of have the floor. If you have something you want to say to have the floor, it's kind of just an open discussion. We have time. This way we're not rushing into anything. And I know when this was developed, like four years back, you know, we had hoped for it to grow and we come into more. And so I just don't want us to be putting this off to the last minute. So. Do we have to? No, I'm sorry. I can step back. So Crystal, if you want to stand up for a second. This is our new town bookkeeper who I was going to introduce for my city manager report, but just for clarity's sake. This is Crystal. She is now the Town of Laguna Vista bookkeeper. She started on April 14th. So she's here just kind of getting the gist of things until we hand off the financial director to position of this board to her whenever things get established with the rest of the staff. So she's just here as a representative. She's just a town citizen, town citizen. That's a, that's a language. And then we have our representative. Do you want to get a picture of yourself?
Sure. I'm Dr. Linda Nelson from UTRGV School of Medicine. I'm Senior Director of Clinical Operations.
You live in Florida?
I do. Well, I used to, right?
That's my girl.
So I, I think the bike stops with me and with Mike. And first I want to apologize. I think there have been issues in the clinic. I'd like to hear what those issues are. We have had a horrible issue with the new phone system that we went to. And I think we've had patients in all of our clinics, not just in Laguna Vista, that have not been able to get through to the clinics. And that's not helpful for any of us. So we have brought an outside agency in with, that will supplement us with probably 25 people to help with calls. I think when overpriced, it was now they will help with calls and a little bit of revenue cycle too. So, but we are putting additional people on the phones so that you'll be able to get through. We're working also with their after hours answering service that would pick it up. If all of our people are busy and the extra agency people are busy, that it would roll into the answering service. We at least would get a message. So I think that we're having drop calls, abandoning calls, and we never knew how many calls were coming in until we went to the new phone system and it's astronomical, obviously, as growing as we grow. I do think that the availability of the appointments, well, I know I changed that about two weeks ago. So there should not be a problem with availability. And Dr. Erin Manusov has been spending time at the clinic. And I think most of the patients really like him. He's also spending some time in Harlingen. So he is only about 50% clinical and 50% research. So I don't have him quite all the time. Goldie, of course, is all the time, but if she's out, I now have a float nurse practitioner that will cover when she's out. So I think some of you may have seen Rosie before. She sometimes would cover or cover by tally. I'd like to get away from telemedicine if we can, so that if you want to be seen in the clinic, you can come in. There should be no restrictions. We're not screening you. We have another outbreak, but you should be able to come in.
I'm Terry Galway.
Oh, hi.
And we've talked several times on the phone and you were so very helpful for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm willing to, for any guy that has my cell phone, because if you don't tell me, I don't know. I mean, really, it's true.
And I just wanted to let you know, my name is Silke Dibby. I'm a city council member. I just wanted to let you know, I just received a call back today from your clinic. Because I put a call in because I couldn't get through. And so it's working with the callback.
Well, that's, that's a positive note here. So we're delighted with the location. We would love to stay. I mean, we aren't having no plans to leave unless you all want us to leave. So I mean, obviously you hold the strings to the clinic and the space. So we do lease the space, but we love Laguna Vista and we'd really like to stay.
Was your pricing for the lease date where it was when we signed it?
As far as I know, it has not changed. It changed owners, I think, early on.
Right. Well, that's just kind of wondering if they, they changed the lease.
To my knowledge, no. It's, I mean, it's remained the same.
So what you guys want from the CDC is the same amount that we are currently doing?
Well, we would like that. We are losing money on the clinic. I will tell you that.
Can you provide us with some financial for the operations of the clinic and sort of what your metrics, how you've seen the caseloads grow or, or case mix or any of that?
But I can ask Mike to prepare that with this.
That would be, I think, of interest.
Do you have enough room? Do you have enough room?
Enough room? Well, I think we do for the number we've been seeing, but as we grow, we'd really like to expand it. I really wanted that old restaurant. I wanted to do that in the beginning, but we really just didn't have enough to do the construction. The one thing about that clinic is it has pocket doors, you know, those that slide. And so sometimes they, you don't, I don't feel like this is private as it is. It could be if you had a regular door on it. But we didn't have room to put regular doors on it because the rooms are so small. But I think where it is, I mean, as successful, we increase the appointment accessibility. And, you know, it may be that we put the float NP down there too at times if it looks like we are busy or, you know, we let our taxants come back and we want them back. We need them for the economy, but sometimes that affects the.
And what are, what are the hours? What are the appointment made?
Eight to five. These meetings are Friday.
So do, is there any availability for the, the after school, the after work, the after five o'clock? Is there any?
We have not made an arrangement for that. We could potentially do something with that float NP, but I, you know, I need, she's covering all of the lower valley. So if I have anybody out, but we're plug and play, you know?
Right.
So for that, so I think that if it looked like there was a real need in the community, we could, even if, you know, at one point we talked about one evening a week.
Right.
That we would do that and go till seven thirty, eight o'clock. So I think we could revisit that. I'd really like to get my daytime appointments with the increased number of appointments full first.
Sure, sure. So have you been able, I noticed from the original contract that it calls for, that indicated that there would be three full-time staff people.
There's Goldie. I have an MA, it's Gabby, and she's leaving. She just got accepted to nursing school, which I'm happy for her, but sad for us because she's good in all she does. I have hired, rehired that physician. His name is Jonathan. He can draw blood. He's been filling in some when Gabby was out. And we have Lefty at the front. So we do have, we always, for the most part, unless they're off some or having a baby or whatever, having surgery, you know, that sort of thing.
So I've been going since they opened and they are my primary doctor.
They are mine too. I don't want to sound like I'm not happy with it because I find it a very, you know, wonderful resource to have here. I just know sometimes it's been difficult to get in and the, the forcing into the telemedicine consults at this point are, are a little awkward. Any chance of getting x-ray capabilities?
Probably not for the size and the lead reinforcing the walls. Okay. We do have, I hate to say, to say this, but we do have x-ray capabilities in Harlingen. And we just put an MRI and a PET CT in Harlingen at our new neuroscience center. So we're developing an Alzheimer's clinic, memory disorder. I have an epileptologist for epilepsy. I have a stroke prevention surgeon, a stroke surgeon, neurologist, not surgeon, and another neurologist. And we're getting a PD neurologist. We had one, but he went back to Philly. So, so we have that capability for you now that we didn't have till really a week ago.
That's great. I get the updates on my phone from UTRGV with all of the, the new doctors and advances. And I'm just terribly impressed at how fast and how well y'all are expanding. And I feel like for us in our community, you know, this is, this is something that's very viable for anyone that's moving here or plans to move here development-wise, any otherwise, that we have this available.
Now, you're one of the really only community-based clinics that we have. I mean, we have some in underserved areas, some that are served by federal grants. We have some associated near hospitals. We do have clinic and Mercedes associated with the NAP hospital. And of course, we have some freestanding things in the Edmond area in Harlingen. But smaller community like this, really, you're one of the only ones, which is nice to be in our community and have that resource.
So based upon your current staffing model, how many appointment slots do you have during the given?
Well, a day, we should, we try to allow 30 minutes for new and 15 for an established and that just goes all day long. So if we had two fifteens or two established and you had a new patient that was coming in, we grab two fifteens to get the new patient in. So, and that goes eight to five. They do stop from twelve to one for lunch because that's the only way. There's such a small number of staff. And I can't even stagger their lunches because it'd be three hours. You couldn't do anything. If you start 11 to 12 or 12 to one and one to two, then you're from 11 to two. So we do close the clinic from twelve to one.
Are you, are you booked every single day for pretty much or?
I'm sorry?
Are you booked every day or do you have a lot of time?
No, there are time. There are availability. I think that sometimes what some people think is full may not be what I think is full. But, you know, but really there is capacity is what I'm trying to say.
So on average, how many patients do you guys think you see a day?
Gosh, some days, maybe 10, 15, some days three. Some days it's not that busy. And why is it not that busy? I don't know if it's a way someone's scheduling. We do try to accommodate you personally. If you want early, you want late afternoon, you want before lunch or Tuesday and not Thursday. So we are, as I say, I'm a little stricter about getting those appointments filled.
So that was where I was heading with the line of questioning is if, if we have a number of available slots throughout the day. And, and is Mike patriarch, right? Then you're going to, so I, I know Mike and I'm, I'm sure he's driving towards productivity with the clinic. At what point would the clinic then become self-sustainable? Would, would a full 90% occupancy of the available clinic slots in a day then allow it to become self-sustaining? Or, or based upon the, the locale and the services rendered by the clinic?
Also up there, payer source.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of Medicare, some little Medicaid, but some, I mean, more Medicare and some commercial. I'd like to run a pro forma on that because I think that's worth what you're in.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I know we're losing money. I can tell you that. But, but still, I think we ought to run that out to see at what point that is. I think that's a very valid question.
And I think that would be informed as we move into the, the plan for renewal of, of a year's time. Because, you know, Texas needs physicians, Texas needs healthcare providers in small communities are really on the tail end of coverage. So it's, it's wonderful to have in our community, but also to have it be able to be self-sustaining. And are you using, so I'm assuming you're using a central scheduling entity and, and not someone necessarily here at the clinic that's answering the phone and making all those appointments.
And we do have a central call center. We do try to make those possible at the location.
Okay.
But we use Athena as an electronic medical record and that scheduling system set up the templates, all of that. But we would like to schedule at least when you leave for you to have your return visit at that time to save the callback, you know? And obviously the callback if you need something, certainly.
Because it, it sounds like if there's been issues with people being able to get in, get in the scheduled appointment or having a, a long delay, but yet there's, there's plenty of availability. I, I, I've seen in, in number of other settings and, and central scheduling for radiology and, and all types of other avenues. That when you divorce the practice from the patient trying to get a hold of the practice, that that's where a lot of that breakdown occurs.
Well, and that's not patient satisfaction. If I want to get a hold of my healthcare worker, I will get a hold of my healthcare worker. If I have a stomach ache or an irate today, I don't want to wait till next week. And I don't want to go to the ER or urgent care if I don't have to. So.
I guess in the financial and the pro forma, I'd be curious too, how much, as you look at what your operating losses are, how much is being UTRGV contributing? And what are all your sources of revenue besides insurance and self-help?
Yeah. I mean, where the school is putting money in, obviously, for salaries and, and what have you, and paying the lease and, and that sort of stuff. I mean, that's coming from out of the central office because we're not making enough on, you know, insurance and the Medicare.
And is there any contributed support? Is there the hospital, or the Texas, University of Texas RGV Foundation able to receive contributions that would be designated for clinic operations? They're not?
They could. That's something I would want to ask the foundation, but I think that's probably could be arranged. I know we've had people, for instance, donate money to a student-run clinic. We have a student-run medical clinic out in an underserved area. And we have an account set up, you know, some parents wanted to donate because their kids were going out. Yeah. So the foundation did set up that. So, and then we pulled that money out for supplies for their clinic. They're in an underserved clinic run by a nun out in Panitas. So once a month. So, but we buy supplies and offer those accounts.
And does UTRGV, is there, I'm embarrassed that I don't know more about what the specialty is. Is family practice part of the? So do you have separate family practice residency programs that?
We have three. We have one in NAP Mercedes. It's actually, we run that clinic now. The prime hospital system built that clinic, but we run it and it has a family medicine residency. There's one at DHR and there's one at MFC. So we do have some that stay in the area. I mean, obviously we're trying to groom them to stay in the area. And some join the faculty and some go off and do fellowships or go into private.
Today I, I checked around because I don't, I don't go to the doctor very often, maybe this, but I took, took her to the clinics in our area. And there's quite a few clinics in Roosevelt and, you know, South Hunter Island and West President.
Clinics in this area. We have opened one at HEB on Berdysland Road. It's sort of a walk-in type acute care clinic. It's called the B Express or Black Arrow Express. It's open from eight thirty in the morning to seven thirty at night, Monday through Friday, and eight thirty to five thirty on Saturday and Sunday.
I'm sorry. I was just talking about the other clinics. There's, there's other health clinics, you know, that are in Port Isabel. And I called a few today and they have, almost all of them have drop-ins. So you can just see a drop-in patient. Do you guys have that over here?
She should be able to see walk-ins. Absolutely.
Did you guys advertise that, that you take drop-ins?
I know that we've advertised that, but we could.
That might be a way for you to get more, more patients because if they don't think that you can, they're not going to waste their time. And a lot of people will say, well, I'm not going to get out of my car. I'm sick. I'm not going to walk up to the door. I want to know if it is or not. So you might want to say that, yes, we are.
The advertisement, I think, is a big, I think if we, the city, work together as, because, I mean, I know as a, as a citizen, when I started, I didn't even know that the clinic existed until I started working here. You know, and I've been here for, you know, over a year. And I have plenty of citizens that walk through the door that go, oh, there's a clinic here and they have no idea. So I think we need better signage for one. And I think that if we can work together with, you know, the new hours or what we're doing and what we're extending, I think that you will see the appointments to start fill up. Because I, I really just think there's a lot of people that maybe don't know about this little gym and, and it, it does look always closed in there. I mean, you look in that little. Yeah. It, it's a, it, it might be good insight, but it's not good. You know, you don't get that streak, you know, and you, it just, I mean, even in my opinion, when you look over there, even if you guys are open, it still looks closed and you're just kind of like, I don't know. So I think if we could get you better signage and, you know, just get out there a little bit more with what you're doing and try to work together. In that sense, you guys might see the appointments start to fill up and the need to. Because the, the need is there. I mean, we get a calls for it and, you know, so I think the need is there. It's just a matter of getting good information from you guys to the citizens, you know, themselves.
We take all insurance and we take everything. I don't think that there's one. We're even in private now, the new ones, but we take most everything.
Yeah. I, I know this is a little wonky. We, we had somebody try to walk through with our, with our, you know, within our staff. And it was, it was really, I mean, I think it took her all day to, to manage to get a teledoc appointment by four o'clock. So there's, I think there's kinks that could be worked out, but I, I mean, obviously that's true with, with the need system. So I, I would be happy to. And I told Michael, you know, I would be happy to share any of that with, with you guys, just because, like you said, if you don't, you don't know what you don't know.
And I would like to leave my cell with you.
Sure. Yeah, that'd be great.
I didn't, I don't have any cars with me.
Okay. I, I think I have the, I don't know if they have my, I have.
Any other questions I could answer? We're excited to be in the valley, excited for the med school.
Well, there's one more thing. You said that you, you were, you signed another lease over there. Could you make sure of what the new lease terms are? Because you said you weren't quite sure of them, right?
No, the ownership changed. The building, I think, got new.
That was all, but that was three years ago or something.
Yeah. Because just the ownership changed.
Just the ownership of the building. But everything just pretty much transitioned over.
So how about we, we like schedule this for a three-month follow-up. You can get the, the numbers and everything that everyone's reporting on. I can circulate that to you guys. Everyone can. And then we can kind of give the working together, advertising these changes and seeing if you guys see a difference in the next three months. And that way you guys can kind of make a better choices going forward.
Look at the appointment schedules, how that's done for, for you and then my cell if you really are having, I mean, if you're having any problems. You know, I had a manager that was managing the two HEBs in this clinic and she left about a week ago. So you're looking at her again. And that's okay. But my cell is eight one three, seven six seven, six four zero two. It's a good old Tampa number. What is your last name? Nelson. N-E-L-S-O-N.
Okay. My phone died with that one, your number. So I'm sorry. Not that I needed to call you again, but always. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now, do you have other questions for me?
What was your first name?
Linda.
If we did signage, would it be, could we do something temporary or should we just go in and, and get something on that corner for the clinic?
Well, I mean, if, if they're going to stay there for the next five years, then we should do more temporary. Yeah. I would need to look into price options for both and see kind of what we're looking at, what signage we look at for, and what their rules and requirements are for signage within there.
Marketing and the brand.
Yeah.
I can hook you in with Augustine Rodriguez. He goes by James.
Okay.
If you'll just give me a call because he's the one that manages all the signs.
Okay.
And he does it with marketing.
Okay. I'll get with him and then with our channel, because we, I don't know, I would have to double check what our rules are on what we can do. And we'll kind of navigate and I'll get some ideas together for us because I think that is, will help just. And, and when I figure out the login information for our electronic board outside, I would be happy to have something on there.
There you go.
But, but, I mean, that's a, we have, that's a really expensive sign that is being totally wasted because we can't find anything on it, but it is on the list. So it's going to the top every day. It's getting closer to the top. But that's another way we can help do that is being able to put that they're accepting patients and, and we can use that board as well. So, but I, I think if we just kind of do that collaborative effort for a few months, we'll see a big, I hope we see a big difference. Because like I said, I, I think that's going to be.
We can also put it in the newsletter.
Yeah, we can put it in my newsletter. I can put it in. Sorry, I didn't think that was on. We can put it in the newsletter. I can.
You can put it in your newsletter, because I get your newsletter.
So, any other questions?
Anything else for me? We are happy about the growth of UTRGV and hope we have a friendship for yours to come.
Thank you, and I'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
All righty, bye-bye.
Thank you, everybody. We can move on to city manager report?
Yes, so I don't, I don't have a lot to report to you guys tonight, other than I did just kind of want to go over, there's been a little bit confusion again about what can be seen by the CDC board, so I just kind of wanted to make sure everybody was on the, the same page. We, we had that came on our agenda, the pickleball court last meeting, and that probably should not have come to this board, and I just want to make sure everyone's clear about what the CDC can, can and cannot make decisions of, you know, the CDC can't say, hey, yeah, we approve refunds to go put, you know, a big court on. You know, we, we can't, that, that's kind of above, above what we can do as the CDC. The CDC is more like the town's local bank, that if somebody has a project and they come to you and they lay out a business plan and they say, hey, we want to bring this to your town, this is what we need your financial help with, you know, this and this, then that's something the CDC can see. But we've had a couple of calls about being, oh, the, the, we're being recommended to see the CDC, that I'm turning down, because those are, those are projects that are going to need, that need to go to town council. Because this is basically like a business, you need to come in to you guys with a business plan that says, hey, I need help for the next five years. I want this to get done, or this is how I think our business will be an asset to your, your town. So I just want to make sure if, if anybody comes to you guys that we're doing the right, I don't want to put things in front of you that you guys really can't make the, the decision on, or, you know, that, that, then they're going to be disappointed that we didn't do anything. You know, we kind of made it work with the pickleball court, because we could kind of do the, the lines and, and it all kind of worked, but that's something that was not, you know, for one, it wasn't a proper application, right, they didn't have what they wanted, they didn't have the cost of what they needed, they just kind of wanted you guys to approve pickleboard courts to just appear, and, and that just unfortunately you guys can't, even if you wanted to. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's kind of clear on, on that, so if you hear that I'm turning down people that, or I'm clarifying, you know, that I, I'm not saying they can't come to the CDC, I'm just trying to navigate so your time isn't wasted, because you guys can't make, you know, those kinds of, we can't do that kind of thing.
So it needs to go to the town council first, is that what you're saying?
Well, it kind of depends on what they're asking, so like in, in the pickleball court example, if they were going to want the CDC, what would have been appropriate for the CDC is if they would have come to us and say, hey, it's going to cost five hundred dollars, or five, fifty thousand dollars to put this slab and this court and this, and this is this property that we own, that we want to put it on, and we want you to help in, in that investment for the town. Then that's something you guys could have seen, but they were wanting to use town property, so they wanted to put the, the pickleball courts on the town property. Well, you guys can't approve anything going on the town property, that would have to go through the town council. In addition, they, they needed the, they wanted just the approval for these pickleball courts, they didn't have any like financial needs, basically, they just were looking for permission, and that's just, I mean, that just would have had to gone through the town council for, for lots of, of reasons, unfortunately, but it, it got on the agenda and we made them somewhat happy, and so it, it all worked, but I just wanted you guys to make sure that so we, we don't, we don't get in a position where we look like we have the authority to do something and then they come in here and you guys can't do anything, you know, and then that would be worse, I think, so. So I just kind of wanted to make sure we were all clear on, on that, and if somebody comes to me with a bid for you guys, I mean, I'm going to make them, I mean, when I first started on this working here and on this committee or this, this board, you know, we went through this big application workshop about, you know, you guys wanted a whole business proposal, you know, what your numbers are, what they're going to be, how it's going to go forward, you know, what you're, so. So when people ask me about it, that's the expectation I'm, I'm sort of laying down, so I just kind of wanted to go over that with, with you guys and make sure everybody, if there was any questions or anything that I could do differently or help with, but that's, that's kind of where I wanted to just make sure we were on the right page.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for stepping up to the plate and, and the way you've been serving the town.
Oh, no problem, my pleasure, my pleasure.
Well, if we do not have any other items, I will make a motion to adjourn.
You already said no, we're not adjourned.